We're going to have a public hearing on the proposed FY216 budget for the city of Tifton. Prior to taking any public comments on the budget, I'm asking Mr. Ryan to go ahead and present the proposed budget. Once he's finished his presentation, if anyone would like any public comments, we'll invite you up to the podium. If you do have a public comment, I would ask you, please just state your name and your address. Just go and put that down, and then you'll have some time to speak and make your comments.
Last minute though. Stephen, can you hear me okay? Three minutes.
Wow.
Technology is great when it works. Yeah, I think you're going to have to turn it down some more. Can you turn it down a little bit more? Can you hear me now?
Very well.
Okay. Mayor, before we start on the public hearing, I have an announcement I'd like to make. I don't know if y'all... I don't know if y'all remember, Mr. Ron, calling him out, he was one of the guys who worked in the gas department from the city of Tifton, hey, yes? He primarily was the leader...
President Service Contact.
President Service Contact.
Oh, yeah.
...this morning. If you would like to... This station is going to be at 4:00 a.m. for home funerals, Friday at 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the funeral will be Saturday at 2:00. If anyone would like to take food to his family, please take it to 4438 Highway 319 South in Tifton. And I would ask that y'all give this family your prayers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let us begin. Mayor and Council, we're going to start on the FY16 budget. Let's see, let's move on 17 years here. I am respectfully presented to use the annual operating capital budget for the history year ended June 30th, 2016. It is in accordance with George Law and the Charter of the city of Tifton. The FY16 budget is balanced and totaled $40.9 million. Now, probably can't just think of too much. Some of the considerations we took into the effective budget are economic factors and conditions of our experience here in Tifton. We have stable to emerging growth, limited revenue growth potential for the planning of future challenges of our community, and we're committed to the services to meet the demands of our citizens, and we're preparing for growth. The fund categories are enterprise funds, seventeen and a half million, general funds, twelve point eight million, and special revenue funds are ten point six million. The FY16 budget encompasses smart sourcing, a conservative ESG rebate, market-based directed pay increases, rising insurance costs and capital improvements, including in these assessment studies that we'll be doing on all of our projects. This is a little pie chart of the breakdown of the budget. We won't go into all of those different things. General Fund Budget Highlights. The general fund's 12.8 million, about $153,000 decrease from FY15. We have overall tax revenues consistent with FY15, based on the preliminary decision report. Our loss collections increased approximately $40,000 with the new businesses coming in. As you know, Hobby Lobby's coming, and if you've been down Tiff Avenue lately, you can see that we also have a new Walmart store coming in right there at 20th Street. Overall personal benefits decreased $111,000 due to the smart sourcing of Public Works and the cemetery. Unfortunately, that was offset by an increase in health care insurance premiums. Contingency of $280,000 for market-directed pay increase, or performance depending on projected revenues, a 1.25% increase in ESG contracts, and a conservative ESG rebate. There's a slide of where our revenues come from, and I'm going to just flip that over to the next chart, which is a pie chart. That gives you a very visual view of how the budget's broken down. As you can see, the principal part of our revenue comes in from local option sales tax, overall taxes, and we have pretty good franchise fees in there as well. That's what the tax digest looks like over the past few years. As you can see, it's kind of flat. We had a spike there in 2013, but other than that, our tax revenues are coming in about the same. That's a breakdown of our tax history over the past few years. We're down a little bit this year from our net maintenance operation digest is down from 348,000, or million, to 338 million. Local option sales tax collections, we're starting to just increase slightly, but basically we're just now getting back to where we were in about 2008. So it's been a long, hard road to hoe for several years here. And there's a use of where our tax dollars go to. The big ones, of course, are police, fire, and public works, and they're the... that's the lion's share of the expenditures of those funds. And that's a breakdown by the chart. Hotel motel fund, we're projecting about $900,000 in that fund. We average about 75,000 per month collections, and the... basically, the overall change from 2015 is nil. Splat funds... Come on, baby, don't be bad to me. Splat funds, that's the 1% local option sales tax that the city of Tifton gets to enjoy. And we have two Splat funds, and thanks to the citizens of Tifton, we've been able to do a lot of capital projects over the past few years with those Splat funds. We have a Splat 4 and Splat 5 that are still active. The funds carried forward in Splat 4 is $266,000, and Splat 4 ended its collections in December 31st, 2012. We have a... these matching funds support the transportation enhancement grant, there's $385,000 of Streetscape 3 left, out of the $500,000 award. And the FY2016 capital budgets that we're funding with Splat 4 inspire equipment and facilities for $120,000. $60,000 of the Splat 4 is for the match to pay the parking lot of the Chula Fire Station, and the county is participating in that on a 50% basis. Streetscape 3 is $444,000. That's the additional funding with Splat included. The senior center expansion is $146,000. $85,000 of that's remaining from a $500,000 CBPG grant for a grand total of $711,000. Splat 5 collections started January 13th, and to date, it's 27 months of collections. So... Thank you, Mayor. Okay. 27 months of collections, and we're collecting about 83% of what we projected originally when the Splat was being... the referendum went out on it. Average monthly collections, 285,000. Average for the past 10 months is up a little bit, it's 292,000. Projected to the end of FY15 was 576,000, and for '16 is three and a half million. Contribution in federal grants are 1.1 million dollars. In the FY2016 capital budget, firing equipment and facilities improvements, $386,000. MIS and GIS tax support improvements, $345,000. Water and sewer capital outlay improvements, $917,000. Road, street strains, $3.7 million. Senior center expansion, $500,000. Reserve for joint projects, $971,000, for a grand total of $6.7 million. Here's a little graph of what our Splat revenues have been. This is Splat 4 and 5, and you say, "Well, wow, if you said you're having an uptick in Splat, is it $363,000 for FY15 and $350 million for '16?" Well, Splat 4 and 5 were added together, and so Splat 4 funds come down, our projections for expenditures and collections go down. Enterprise funds, water, sewer, gas, solid waste, they are not paid for from tax dollars. They are not supported in any way with tax dollars. They are strictly on the fees for services that are charged from those funds. We have five water fund, $3.4 million, sewer, $3.8 million, gas, $4.8 million, solid waste collection and disposal, $5.2 million, and the Tiff Theater is $258,000. And there's the slide. In the water and sewer fund this year, we have a continuation rate study, as you may recall. We started this last year, Scott? Yeah, it was budgeted last year. We're going to continue with that. There's $50,000 budgeted for that study this year. We also included, again, the conservative ESG rebate, and then a one-year of debt service for the revenue bonds has been budgeted for this year. The solid waste collection and disposal fund, with adjusted revenues and expenditures related to the outsourcing of contractual services with Golden Environmental. Landfill budget includes GMA lease purchase for heavy equipment. As you may recall, the city of Tifton has a... we're part of a GMA lease pool. We have millions of dollars in there, and we have to turn those funds over every five years. So what we're doing is creating... we're leasing... we're buying the equipment, refinancing it through the lease pool, and leasing it back over a period of years so we can keep those funds turned over. We've got a $50,000 market pay directed pay increase for performance, again, depending on projected revenues, and new cell reserves are being carried forward and used in the vertical expansion project. Capital projects, just to name a few. The senior center expansion, $731,000. Four police units with emergency equipment, $123,000, and we're going to try to stretch that into five. Chula Fire Station, I mentioned before, $120,000 to complete the parking lot up there. Fire ladder apparatus, we have this $960,000 purchase if we get the $864,000 grant that we're applied for. Chief, you want to hear about the grant?
They're releasing the awards.
So hopefully, we'll hear about that pretty soon. We have Omega Fire Engine Pumper, $250,000. 20th Street, $700,000. Everybody wants to know when we're going to pay it. We're going to get her done, folks. Hunt Road, $540,000, and that's to accommodate the Hobby Lobby just going in out there. The Traveling Bridge filter, that's out of the wastewater treatment plant, that has to be put back in operation ASAP. And then, as I mentioned before, the landfill compact, $700,000. Other funds in which resources required by law will be maintained in separate funds are detailed in the budget book, and there's a budget book right there if anybody wants to look at it. Some of those funds are or are not limited to capital project funds, service funds, pension funds, grants, sewer sinking, et cetera, et cetera. This recommended budget will allow the city to maintain quality of the community, enhance the public safety, police, fire, transportation, drainage, provide contingency for the market base or value directed pay increase for performance depending on projected revenues. It will allow for better employment opportunities and assistance in retention of qualified employees. And the next time that this budget will be brought before the city council will be June 18th, 2015, at 5:00 p.m. for adoption. If council has any items in the budget they would like to have changed between now and June 18th, please get those to me ASAP so that I don't have Lois over here having a nervous breakdown because she doesn't have time to finish them before it's presented. Would like to brag on staff, Lois and her staff have done a tremendous job of putting this budget together, considering all the hurdles they've had to go through here lately. And also would like to brag on ESG. I don't know if y'all have noticed it lately, but if you look at the gateways into the city of Tifton, I think you'll see a vast improvement in their appearance. They're just doing a wonderful job for us, and I look forward to a long and continued relationship there, Scott. I'll answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'd like to open this up for any comments on the FY2016 budget. If anybody would like to come up and make any comments, and you're... Mr. Ryan, the podium, please say your name and write it down. I'm just going to put it down. There's one second. If you would like to make any comments about the budget. Mayor, I see no request for comments, so I'd ask that this public hearing be closed.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Attorney, can we take a short little break before we go on to the...
Yes, sir. We have a... I think we have a special call for workshop, if you'd like to take a minute. I think that there's a PowerPoint presentation. We just take a minute to get that set up and give you a few minutes.
Let's take about five. Everybody relax, use the bathroom, do what you need to do, and then we'll go. Time, but technology is technology.
And the technology's running slow tonight, so to the contestants, there might be a pause between the changes in slides to... I'm pretty good at this, actually. Attorney, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, citizens of Tifton and Tiff County, and to our fire party, all you hear, for both career and volunteer life. Good turnout, thank you, guys. And Bill. In light of the recent release of a review of the Tifton-Tiff County Fire Department by county personnel, I want to tell you that I appreciate this opportunity to address, at least in part, some of the concerns that may have been raised by that report. This slide here, I want to speak briefly about the benefits of the interlocal agreement that we now have in place and have had in place since 2004. With regard to the improvements, our manpower has increased, our training has increased and improved, our fire apparatus fleet and facilities have been modernized and are currently budgeted for future expansion and modernization. These mutually beneficial improvements have occurred despite challenging financial conditions for everyone, particularly since 2008. Briefly, I want to touch on an acronym that many folks have heard, and I just want to go touch briefly about the ISO. ISO is an acronym for Insurance Services Office. They are a private organization. They come into communities, and they compile data regarding that community through what they call a fire suppression rate survey. From that survey, they establish a public protection classification with regard to fire protection. This info is used by insurance companies to set property insurance rates within a particular community. They rate that public protection classification on a scale of 1 to 10, with the lower number being the better number. I will note that in the last 25 years, due to agreements we've had with the county, including our present interlocal agreement, the city of Tifton's ISO rating has improved from a 6 to a 4. The county's ISO rating has improved from a 6/9 to a 4/9. This is a direct result of long-term planning and agreements that we've had in place over the years. I just want to make it clear that our relationship with the county has been beneficial for both city residents and county residents. I've reported, touched on transparency and communication. Basically, what the agreement says, the interlocal agreement, is that it provides for any issues or concerns related to the department to be communicated to the city manager by the county manager for resolution. And if it's not resolved in that way, then it is to be resolved by the Service Delivery Coordinating Committee, what we commonly refer to as the SDCC. The city of Tifton provides, on a monthly basis, a detailed general ledger report, monthly, showing what we spent and where we spent it for the fire department. One example of that report. We also comply with all requests for reports or other information requested by the county. Annual collaboration with the county to develop department's budget is performed every year by myself, Mr. Ryan, and Mr. Carter. Numerous attempts by the city to schedule meetings with county managers for budget matters this year, we've made attempts, and have had no response. What this slide shows is our efforts to meet with the county to discuss budgetary matters since March of this year. An email on the left regarding cancellation of meetings by the county, and there is a second email indicating our efforts to try to schedule meetings of the SDCC with the county, and to date, we have been successful in scheduling that meeting. Next slide. With regard to equipment repair and replacement, we do annual hose tests, we do annual pump tests, we do annual aerial ladder apparatus inspections, we also do a five-year nondescript test on our aerial apparatus, and we do annual PPE, or personal protective equipment inspections. For the 10 years that our department, unified department, has existed there, there have been zero pump failures, zero hose failures, zero ladder failures, zero injuries to other firefighters or the citizens of this county due to our maintenance and testing procedures for our equipment and apparatus. We have not had a single hose fail on scene because of pressure. NFPA guidelines for hose testing changed in 2013. I failed to catch that change, and we continue to test our hose the last several years at 250 PSI, and that's a tack line pressure. The new guideline calls for a 300 PSI test pressure. However, as you'll note, there has not been any increased risk or undue risk our firefighters or the citizens of this county have resulted in my failure to note that increase in pressure. Typical tack line pressure in Tiff County rarely exceeds 130 PSI. Rare, almost never. That's a tack line pressure. Therefore, the tests we perform on our hose have been more than adequate for the pressure of our area. However, we'll certainly try to meet that standard in the future for testing of our hose. A little more about equipment repair and replacement with regard to personal protective equipment. All PPE issued by the Tifton-Tiff County Fire Department is inspected annually by a single individual person responsible for that equipment. The department's standard practice has always been that any PPE used during an incident or during training is inspected and cleaned prior to storage, and that is directly out of our SOG's standard operating guidelines. Both replacement and temporary PPE is available to any fire department personnel on request, and again, according to our guidelines, laws for damaged PPE will be handled on case-by-case basis by the department's fire officers. What fire officer means is our captains, our lieutenants, and our volunteer station chiefs, and any personnel that they've designated as training officer, lieutenant, and so forth and so on. What you see here is a picture on the left that shows a PPE presented in the county report. I'm here to tell you tonight that that equipment on the left was either not issued out of the Tifton-Tiff County Fire Department lockup, and if it were issued out of our lockup, it was not issued in that condition, unequipped, please, I can tell you that. What you see on the right is what we have in our lockup to use when needed, to issue when equipment needs to be replaced. As an example of the process we have in place for checking equipment, you'll note the document on the next slide. Also note the quotation there. This is just an example of one-year equipment checks. We check them, they sign off on them, we sign off on them. It is Department of Policy that each firefighter in this department be responsible for the upkeep of all items that have been issued to them. The firefighters are responsible for maintaining possession and for any problems they encounter during these items. And I believe the folks behind the test see in that form in many times with the volunteer and career life. We also have a process in place for the maintenance and repair of our apparatus and other equipment. The form on the next slide is what is used by volunteer, career personnel alike. It does not have to be an officer to report a repair. Any member of our department that sees something in need of repair can either call it in whereby one of us, one of us, meaning any member of this department that receives that call, fills out that form and submits it to either me, our training officer, or one of our captains, and it is dealt with in that point. It is forwarded to our emergency vehicle technician, and that starts the process of repair. Any supporting documentation, showing parts, or labor, or outside agencies that may have to be relied upon to make the repairs is documented, and it is filed in the folder for that particular apparatus. Been in place for a very long time. This is how we find out. That is the document we use to become aware that repairs are needed. And when we become aware of that, we make the repair. This slide right here is one I've took with, like. This is two state-of-the-art E1 water master vacuum tankers that we received with the use of Splat 4 funds last year. We've had them just a few days shy of a year. Those two tankers have been placed at Stations 7 and El Dorado. Any supporting documentation, showing parts or labor or outside agencies that may have to be relied upon to make the repairs is documented, and it is filed in the folder for that particular apparatus. Been in place for a very long time. This is how we find out. That is the document we use to become aware that repairs are needed. When we become aware of that, we make the repair. This slide right here is one I took with, like, this is two state-of-the-art E1 Water Master vacuum tankers that we received with the use of phosphor bronze last year. We've had them just a few days shy of a year. Those two tankers have been placed at Station 7 in El Dorado and Station 5 in Chula. They've been called into service several times already and have performed maintenance, by the way. By the way.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can I ask, is that actual picture of ours?
Yes, that is. Yes, I'm glad I failed to mention that. That right there is a picture of the actual two tankers we purchased, and they are placed on the E1 website page. So if you go to E1, Emergency 1, they're the largest manufacturer of emergency apparatus in the world. If you go to their website page, that is Tipton, Georgia, out there too, by the way. That was taken out of Agua Rama. They sent a professional photographer to take pictures of those tankers. We made the, I guess you'd say we're Mr. December or Miss December in the E1 calendar for 2015.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah. I thought this might make a good Christmas present for folks. Continuing with our equipment repair and replacement, it's an expensive endeavor. We have processes in place, we use our pump test, we use several factors to determine when an apparatus approaches the end of its life. What is referenced in this slide is our plan for replacement of apparatus for volunteer stations with phosphide money. By the way, the tankers you previously saw on the prior slide was purchased with phosphor money, as indicated, well, it's not indicated, but anyway. There's the cost of these tankers, $249,000 a piece. We have scheduled for this year, $250,000 for a Class A pumper to go in Omega. And you see the schedule for your replacement of tanker purchases in the future. Now, it's always the case that splosh money is spent as it comes in, so it's quite possible that purchase of these particular apparatus will be, you know, soon. Hopefully, collections will allow us to speed up the process of purchasing these apparatus for our county station. By the way, these figures were pulled from the FY 2015 budget capital improvement, so they are there. The city of Tipton and Tipton County have an agreement to complete construction and pavement of the driveways. You may recall Mr. Reiner's presentation, we had to slide $60,000 for completion of Chula Fire Station, paving, parking. And the Westside Station has also been budgeted, but of course, because of the car from the road project, we thought it wise to wait for that to complete before we spend a bunch of money on driveway paving. So they're done, and we will complete that project. Next slide. It's budget cuts made by Tipton County Manager in FY 2013. As I mentioned earlier, because we're a budget processor with Mr. Carter, FY 2013, maintenance repair was cut by 20 percent, radio communications cut by 50 percent, building maintenance was cut by 25 percent, training and travel was cut by 28 percent, and when I requested $22,000 for personal protective equipment, Mr. Carter reduced that request to zero. That is the worksheet, the work sheet on the left there. In 2014, we met again for a budget discussion. County manager cut the proposed budget for the fire department, including personal protective equipment, by nearly 50 percent. Maintenance and repair, parts and labor was cut 4,000, training was cut 2,000, and supplies and PPE requested amounts of 25,000, and the county manager reduced it by 13 percent.
Chief, can I ask you a quick question? Are these, whose notes are these that are on the side of this page? Are those your notes? Larry, are those your notes? Whose notes are those?
No, ma'am. As I recall, handwritten notes on the right of Mr. Carter's.
So that's his actual dissection of the budget?
Yes, ma'am. That's his worksheet, Mr. Personal Notes, Jim Carter. With regard to our training, over the last three years, hold training hours for the department, including volunteers, every day, consistent year to year. This has been particularly challenging despite the cuts of training and travel budgets. We've been able to maintain that training level. With regard to our apparatus response.
Chief, can you talk about training then? We have, they have to recertify annually, is that correct?
Yes. Training and travel expenses allocated for people we have on staff who are trained either as an inspector or as an arson Level 2 investigator. We have two of those on staff, and we have an inspector. That level, that level of training has to be maintained and continued in education, so we budget for that. With regard to our apparatus response, our standard operating guidelines was adopted for the combined department in 2004 with the advice and consent of volunteer chiefs and career personnel. An acknowledgement page was signed by those volunteer chiefs who participated in that process, and we have that on file. And emergency fire personnel, regardless of city or county, have the ability to call in resources at any time. We call our standard operating guidelines guidelines for a reason. Guidelines are more flexible than SOPs, which is a common term to hear, particularly in the military, but SOGs are guidelines. They allow more flexibility by definition. So with response, with regard to those apparatus responses, you'll see here, this comes from our SOGs. I think it's important to note, looking at this, that our response guidelines are based on the best possible coverage for all citizens. We do not use city-county criteria, career, volunteer criteria. We use a criteria that gets us where we need to be with the most resources quickly. So some discussion in the county report regarding leadership.
Chief, can you back up to previous slide? Can you give everyone an example of what a response would be in the county? And then an example of what that same response or similar response would be inside the city, and this is as far as apparatus goes?
Regarding structure fire?
Sure.
Okay, sure. If we have a structure fire in the city, we will dispatch three city engines and a command unit and our city volunteers. If we have a structure fire in the county, we'll send a city engine. Says here, two county engines and district volunteers and two tankers. Our practice has been for many years now to send three county engines, the one in the district where the call comes from, the two adjacent districts, and the tankers. Now, looking at this, we send actually more engine companies to county structure fires than we do city. Of course, everything is situational. If it comes in as a structure fire alarm, and a sheriff's deputy arrives on scene, and radios back that that's not what it is at all, that somebody was grilling in the backyard and the neighbor thought it was the house on fire, then of course, the response won't be what's provided for in the guideline. These are minimum guidelines, minimum. That's what we do as a minimum. Based on the situation, we do much more, and we have done so very many times, and we do it very quickly. Oftentimes, the need for manpower is greater than the need for apparatus that are particularly soon. If we have, and this is dependent on time of day or not, if we have a full 100% response by volunteer and apparatus, then we don't necessarily send two engines. We have enough tankers, we have enough water, we have enough engines. What we may need is manpower, so we dispatch full-time firefighters, either a pickup or a smaller, what we call a radicchio, brush doctor. So it's all situation. These are just guidelines, and they're just, and it's been this way for a very, very long time. These are the guidelines that have been in place since day one under our interlocal agreement. Report, talk a little bit about leadership. The overall exemplary safety record of the Tipton-Tipton County Fire Department is one of the best examples I can remember about our leadership. I just want to comment, leadership isn't just meat. We've got some fine men and women in this department. I could not operate without those captains and lieutenants and engineers and volunteer station chiefs as effectively as we do. This is a team effort. Ultimately, the responsibility is mine. That goes with the job. And believe me, I don't need anyone to tell me that that's how I should conduct myself. But I can tell you without a doubt that one of the proudest things I am of, one of the things I'm most proud of is our safety record. Again, zero, zero injuries, zero pump failures, zero pump failures, hose tests, excuse me, based on our maintenance policy. It just hasn't happened. Volunteer participation remains a critical part of this department's strategy and has remained constant over the past 10 years. Our department creates an atmosphere of opportunity through cross-training. What I mean by that is often we have, not often, but from time to time, a person will leave our department and go seek employment elsewhere in other departments. And because we train them in several areas, not just in water supply, but in aerial rescue, in hazmats, many phases of fire service, they can go to any fire department and go into any unit that they're assigned to. Right now, we have at least 58 active applications to join our department. People want to come to work. In conclusion, I'd like to say, sometimes things just need to be said. The men and women behind me live this every day, as do I, but the safety of the firefighters and citizens of Tipton-Tipton County has always been, and will continue to be, the top priority for this department. Another more important, we know that. Citizens of the city and the county, then rest assured that they're not at risk because of any of our practices. We continue, as we have in the past, to provide the best fire protection and emergency services we possibly can with the resources we have. That has always been the case. And it's not me, it's the folks behind us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. I believe, chief, if we can, we will have any questions from the council? If there are any, let's start over here with Wes, District 1.
I got a couple here, too. Just my trade, as a banker, the first thing that comes to my mind is dollars and cents and budgets and things like that.
Yes, sir.
You know, when the county manager cut the budget for PPE, what was your response to that?
Well, naturally, I didn't like it. I guess the short answer is this, Mr. Eber. Mr. Carter can be very persuasive at times. I objected to it, but the conversation that we had was that he had enough experience with fire chiefs that he has found that typically, fire chiefs will stash stuff or hoard or try to build up reserve, and he thought that we probably had enough PPE to last us one more year without purchasing anymore. To which I responded, that is not the case, and I can assure you, it was not the case. That is made insistent, insisted that it's got to be made.
There was three alternatives here that faced us. We either keep the administration of the fire department, get the city to give to the county, or else we split. My focus on my question is going to be about the split, because I think that's the most harming, the route that I think you guys want to go, but obviously, that's an option to take at the beginning. How would a split affect our ISO rating?
In my experience, having gone through at least one, I have gone through one ISO survey, and speaking with other folks in the business, as you'd say, I firmly believe that our, the city's ISO rating, if we come to a total split, would actually benefit.
Would benefit?
We would benefit.
Is that based on any sort of agreements or anything in place, or that could be offered?
Well, we would not have to have an agreement with the county for us to benefit as a standard on the part. Now, if an automatic paid agreement was entered into, that might well benefit the county, but it would not benefit us.
Well, then, the last question, obviously, if the split happens, and I don't know if you can answer this question, I don't even actually, it's maybe a later, maybe a raw question, I'm not sure, but how is a split, how would a split affect the city?
Well, basically, I'm going to give one answer for you. If there was a split between the city and county, and county have their own department, then the county would need to create a special tax system whereby only the unincorporated residents would be taxed for their services, for county service, fire services. So basically, it should not affect the city's taxes, because the cost of our department would only be borne by the unincorporated residents in that special tax system.
Chief, very good paraphrasing. Thank you for doing that, and, you know, putting facts in there and actual documents.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for that.
That was great.
Yes. One of the questions I had, and you kind of alluded to that a little bit, on the operational testing of the hoses, the county report and our report talking about the PSI levels and exactly how that works.
Yes.
Could you kind of elaborate a little bit more on that safety issue?
Well, NFPA provides guidelines for tested hoses, which have been done for, under the previous guideline, for 24, 25 years. The recent change has no practical application as to increased or undue risk. Attack line hoses are tested at, previously before the 2013 edition, attack line hoses were tested at 250 PSI, and supply line hoses were tested at 200 PSI. The only change with regard to PSI testing and pressure was the attack line pressure, and it was bumped up to 300 PSI. My point was that while we were not compliant to the letter of that NFPA standard change, it poses no undue or increased risk, because we still tested the hoses at 250, and we do not use the hoses in fire ground operations at anywhere approaching 250 PSI. It just doesn't happen. We ran 250 PSI through an attack line hose, it would take probably four men to hold it down if it didn't blow the nozzle off the end of it. That's basically my point.
What would be the max pressure for that hose?
Like I said, about 125, 130. It doesn't have to do so much with the failure of the hose at that point, but the ability of a firefighter to control the nozzle and actually maneuver the line.
All right, Chris. Johnny?
Chief, if this split thing that happened, just how would this affect the people in South? Okay, let's say 17th Street is the boundary, and I live at 1701. If this split happened, you can come up to 17th Street and stop, and my house will burn down, because I live across the street. Could you tell, just explain to, just kind of tell me a little bit about that, you know? Most of the fires that happen, if you can recall, happen across 17th Street, and the response time, that's what I'm getting at. How long, you know, I don't want to be waiting with a garden hose trying to fight, to save my house, and the truck got to come from fight, try to save my house, and the truck got to come from over there. See, that's just something I don't want to do, because I'm not a fire fighter.
Mr. Eber, that would depend on several factors. If there was a split, I don't think that necessarily equates to the city of Tifton Fire Department stopping at the city limits. That would be something that would have to be negotiated between the governing bodies and management. If that were the case, I don't think I could stop my guys and huddle in it. I'll be honest with you. Hopefully, that doesn't become a reality.
Yes, thank you, sir.
But if there is a case of a split, and we are told that we're in city limit only, and if the county just allows us from going into the county, then that would be a real problem for the citizens, really on city.
Just hope I got enough water hoses around the house. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Johnny. To follow up on Johnny's, before we go to Julie. There's a certain type of agreement. What's that called? That if they did split with us, they could do a?
Automatic aid agreement. There's basically two types of agreements outside of, you know, interlocal agreements, at which you can, you know, put many options within our local agreements. But typically, there's a mutual aid agreement and an automatic aid agreement. The automatic aid agreement provides that we would, or any agency that you have an automatic, we would respond on first alarm. We wouldn't have to be called on second alarm. We would just respond just as we do now. In fact, just as we did prior to two thousand and four. We were under automatic aid agreement with the county at that time, at least from ninety-nine to two thousand and three. And we responded on first alarm right now. In fact, if you're just a citizen, keeping an eye or a bird on the power line watching the fire department, you would not know the difference between the agreement we have now and an interlocal, I mean, and an automatic aid agreement. You couldn't determine by response, because we would respond just as we do now. Now, there's variations on that, but they would have to be specified. A mutual aid, by the way, ISO does not give any credit for mutual aid agreements, but they do recognize automatic aid agreements. And with regard to mutual aid agreements, those are second alarm or third alarm agreements. We have those agreements with surrounding municipalities and county departments. If they get into a fix, they have their nine-one-one dispatch contact our nine-one-one dispatch, and they ask for assistance, and we get it. That's called second alarm mutual aid.
Thank you, Chief. Do you want to springboard on what he had said, because that kind of tied into it? Julie?
I do have a couple of questions. One, I want to go back to what Wes talked about with the personal protective equipment. Have I got that correct? Okay. Is that, are those suits, how much does it cost for one of those suits?
The last purchase today was nine hundred dollars for the coat, and seven hundred dollars for pants.
So they ain't cheap?
No, ma'am.
And so when that gets cut from the budget, that hurts?
Yes, ma'am. Now, you can buy different specifications of equipment. You can get cheaper equipment, you can get some much more expensive.
Sure.
Generally speaking, it's anywhere between four, two-hundred and fifteen.
And they're, are they specifically sized, or is it sort of one size fits all? How does that work?
No, one size does not fit all. We have had vendors come in and sizes. When our annual gear checks doesn't reveal a real problem, then we will order generic sizes.
Sure.
In other words, based on?
Kind of average size or something, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. And so we've done both ways.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that was one question. And then, going back to the ISO, and understanding that the lower the ISO, the better it is for the citizens.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
How does that, I guess I want the public to understand how that impacts them individually with regard to homeowner's insurance and the cost of maintaining your property, or not maintaining, but insuring your property.
That, what we call the PPC is a public protection classification that ISO establishes by coming into a community and doing a survey. It's a very complicated process. It has to do with a look at water supply, response time, manpower, equipment on trucks, on pump test records, hose test records, training records. The process, from my understanding and speaking with people in the business, that it has changed somewhat since the two thousand and eleven survey that we had. But to answer your question, the ISO gathers this information and assigns that public protection classification to a particular community, in case the city of Tifton were a four. Not too bad. Not as good as we'd like it to, not too bad. That four indicates that their insurance rates would have dropped from the previous survey in the city. But, now I'll take that back. We did not improve between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and eleven. We maintained our four. But the county didn't. They dropped from a five slash nine to a four slash nine. What that means is homeowners in the county who classify, who are qualified as a four previously as a five, will see a reduction in the property insurance rate for their home. Now, there's criteria that you use, that the insurance companies and the ISO use to determine whether or not you indeed are a four or a nine. That has to do with distance, distance to a credible water supply and distance to a fire station, road miles. All that plays into it. But the bottom line is this, if your ISO, your community's ISO rating improves, drops your insurance rates for property, and business properties, by the way, business and residential properties, will also drop and improve. As to how much, it really determines, that's the common denominator.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. I have one more question. Our consultant that we have asked to come in and evaluate everything for our, this second opinion, this overall second opinion, what's the, what's our time framing on that? Where are we with our timing on that?
Well, she can answer, but actually, we're in the process of preparing, filling out that pre-survey packet.
Right.
We're trying to get that turned around as quickly as possible.
Okay.
We should be seeing them one, three, four, five days, chief.
Hopefully, yes, ma'am. As Larry said, we, actually, Water Department has completed their part, City of Tifton Water Department has completed their part of the pre-survey packet we sent back. Fire Department is very close.
Okay.
I haven't quite gotten to it, but we're very close. There is a, typically, ISO surveys, and I'll make this brief, they survey three areas. Ten percent of the grade that they give, give the community is based on communications facilities, that is nine-one-one. Forty percent of the grade is the Water Department, availability, pressure, supply, hydrants, such things. And fifty percent of that grade is based on Fire Department survey. We are very close to finishing our part of the pre-survey packet. Water Department is through. There's some mapping that we're waiting on, that Adam Cobb is working on very hard, and I think he's close to completion. And, but we have not yet received back the pre-survey packet that I forwarded to Mrs. Jones at the NMA over a week ago.
Okay. But it's close. And I guess, you know, to, the reason I asked for that specifically is, you know, that's that's sort of our due diligence for all of this discussion, you know, so we can have that second opinion. And, you know, not having talked personally with the county, I guess that door is still very much open. I know that I feel comfortable speaking for all of us, that that door is still very much open to have that discussion with the county, once our due diligence is completed. I hope that nobody would take away from this meeting, or any meeting, that the doors have closed between the city and the county, because I don't think that's the case. So, you know, I appreciate you being able to come in and answer, because it's, you know, there are a lot of questions, and there are a lot of rumors that are out there on the streets, and so, you know, to allow us the opportunity to complete our due diligence, sit back down with our, our friends at the county, and continue to discuss and determine what's going to be best for, one, the citizens of this community, whether it's Tifton or Tiff County, number two, the guys and Beth, that work so hard to protect us. And, you know, I'm going to lay down tonight knowing I'm safe, because my fire department's at work. So, you know, we, we want to be able to continue that discussion in the proper, open manner, and I want the people of this community to hear that and understand that. The door's not closed by any stretch from, I think, this organization. We've just got to complete our due diligence.
I could agree more, Councilwoman. Let's do it, stay close.
Mm-hmm.
For about.
I guess we save the worst for last, and that would be me. So, it's funny, when you, when you go last, somebody else usually beat you to it, but I did want to very much talk about ISO ratings, and I'm still going to talk about them. In my other lifetime, I was a risk management consultant with the state. And in doing that, you, you had self-insurance over the state industries, and you had to go out and you had to check these ISO ratings, because that meant how much our self-insurance was worth on our excess insurance people, like I go with Lords of London and people like that. So I understand very much what an ISO rating means to the taxpayer, to the citizen. And I just, you know, we all pay county taxes. Just because you live in the county, you aren't the only ones that pay them. Everybody in the city pays county taxes. So we're all one big family. We're all one big community. And what concerns me is that, that if we get into two separate units, two separate fire departments, you know, we, we could cause county taxes to have to go up. That is a possibility, to be able to enforce two different fire departments. As I said, we all pay county taxes. And, and that's not what we want to do. And then, and then the citizens, on those ISO ratings. Chief, I love everything you say, but I don't have to hear you say about the ISO ratings. I know. I know. We're the only reason that the county has the ISO ratings they have now. And if they go out on their own, what concerns me is, is just like we've discussed, is that bottom dollar for the taxpayers. Whether you get taxed, whether your ISO rating increases, it can be a problem. So we really want to force that, and really want everybody to understand that, and get that message out to all of our community. Michael, I want to thank you. You did a fantastic job, and of course, I say to the county, we are still prepared to sit down and talk. We'll have to do it in an open conversation. We can't go into executive session for that. Our attorney, esteemed attorney, has advised us of that. But we're ready to sit down and talk face to face. I don't think there's any one of the five of us up here that wants to see this thing split. We think it's better for our community to stay involved and continue as we are, and continue with you as chief. However, we have employed a consultant, as Julie was talking about, and we do want to wait and see what that report has, and then we can, we'll be better in a position to make an informed statement and work through it at that time. That's our responsibility to our citizens, who are our bosses, as you hear me say quite a bit. But, Michael, I can't express to you, and the applause you got from, from your team sitting around you and behind you, expresses how well you advised us on this, and how well your presentation was. Thank you. Thank you for being our chief. Thank all of your people for being here tonight. We've had a great meeting, and at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
You may have the last word, sir.
On behalf of the Tifton-Tiff County Fire Department, volunteer, and career alike, we are one department. We still are.
Amen.
And we're on the road.
Amen.
We want to thank you for your continued support.
You've got it, chief. Thank y'all. We're adjourned.
We have some comments, some comments, some presentations, if anybody has a right for them. They have a right to vote.